All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Stratford Board of Zoning Appeals regularly scheduled meeting for August 2nd. For those of you who have not appeared before us before, we're going to ask, we're going to read the petitions into the record. We're going to ask the petitioner to come forth and explain their application. We're then going to ask questions, if there are any, from the panel to the developer, to the petitioner. And after that, we're going to ask the audience if there's anyone here who wishes to speak in favor or against the petition. We'll then close that portion of the public hearing, and we will may or may not take it up in the administrative session, depending on the complexity of the issue and whether or not the board feels comfortable rendering a decision today. If you have cell phones, please put them on silent so that it doesn't interrupt the speakers as they are speaking. With that having been said, the first petition on the agenda is evidently withdrawn, and that's 2152 Barnum Avenue, correct? So there's no action we need to take on that. It's going automatically on the September agenda. Is it my understanding that petition number two, 119 Swanson, is also coming off? All right, so that is not notice that it will be on the September agenda, so just for housekeeping purposes, let's read it into the record and make a motion to hold it over to the next public hearing. So, Mr. Loewen, will you read 119 Swanson into the record, and then we'll entertain a motion to move it to the next public hearing?
No, pardon, Mr. Chairman. So our scheduled item number two is 119 Swanson Avenue petition of Ashu Bhati seeking a site plan review and variances of section four dash, 4.2, to waive the maximum building coverage from the required 25% to 33.4% and waive the rear yard setback from the required 25 feet to 23.7 feet for a proposed rear two-story addition end deck incidental to a single-family dwelling unit in an RS4 zone. And I will continue and make the motion to keep this as a new item for September or future meeting.
We have a motion, Mr. Loewen, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Tiki. Oh, just for housekeeping purposes, Mr. Baird, who is a regular member, is not feeling well. He's had some medical issues. And Mr. Tiki, who is an alternate, will be sitting in on this portion of the public hearing. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. That will be held over to the September public hearing without prejudice. The next one, why don't we just take, well, it has a dot next to it rather than a number. We'll take dot 1, 2, 3, 4. Let's just take them all since they're the same petitioner. Let's just take them all and read those into the record. With them, I'll ask you to please read 2863 Broadbridge, the dot through four.
2863 Broadbridge Avenue. Petition of Fairfield Stanford Development LLC seeking variances for a five-lot subdivision for four new single-family dwellings and a lot for the existing single-family home in an RS4 zoning district. The following proposed lots require variance approvals prior to submittal to the planning commission. The hardship being the size and shape of the parcel will not accommodate the additional area. Do you want me to keep reading? All of them?
Yeah, please, if you would. Thank you.
Okay. Number one, 2863 Broadbridge Avenue, Lot 2. Petition of Fairfield Stanford Development LLC seeking a variance of section 3.3.1.3D for a waiver of the minimum rear lot area from 11,250 square feet to 7,473 square feet, section 3.3.1.4, to waive the required rectangular meeting, meeting the minimum lot width and lot depth within the rear lot, and section 3.3.1.5 to waive the minimum front yard setback from 30 feet to 20 feet, and rear yard setback from 37.5 feet to 25 feet for the creation of a single-family dwelling rear building lot. Number two, 2863 Broadbridge Avenue, Lot 3. Petition of Fairfield Stanford Development LLC seeking a variance of section 4.2 from the required side yard setback from 10 feet to 3 feet, and section 3.1.1 for the accessory garage covering, coverage from 20% to 22% for the existing single-family dwelling and detached garage. Number three, 2863 Broadbridge Avenue, Lot 4. Petition of Fairfield Stanford Development LLC seeking a variance of section 3.3.1.3D for a waiver of the minimum rear lot area from 11,250 square feet to 6,314 square feet, section 3.3.1.4, to waive the required rectangular meeting, the minimum lot width and lot depth within the rear lot, and section 3.3.1.5 to waive the minimum front yard setback from 30 feet to 20 feet, side yard setback from 15 feet to 10 feet, and rear yard setback from 37.5 feet to 25 feet for the creation of a single-family dwelling rear building lot. Number four, 2863 Broadbridge Avenue, Lot 5. Petition of Fairfield Stanford Development LLC seeking a variance of section 3.3.1.3D for a waiver of the minimum rear lot area from 11,250 square feet to 9,000 square feet, section 3.3.1.4, to waive the required rectangular meeting, the minimum lot width and lot depth within the rear lot, and section 3.3.1.5 to waive the minimum side yard setback from 15 feet to 10 feet, and rear yard setback from 37.5 feet to 25 feet for the creation of a single-family dwelling rear building lot.
I thank you very much. That was a lot to read into the record. Mr. Knott, I assume you're here to represent the petitioner?
I am. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Barry Knott. I'm a lawyer with the firm of Knott, Knott &amp; Dunn. We have offices at 1656 Main Street, Stratford. I'm here on behalf of Fairfield Stanford Development LLC, which is the applicant. This time, I'd like to submit the certificates of mailing and reference a folder of exhibits which I have just handed to each of you, to which I'll be making reference during the course of my presentation. And I ask that all four applications that Ms. Whitman just read will be handled by me as one presentation, because my comments apply to all four equally, so there's no sense to be going through it four times.
Yeah, understood. Thank you.
I don't want to put the crowd through that. Anyway, this is an application for five-lot subdivision of single-family homes, four of which require the variances just a little read by Ms. Whitman and shown on the agenda. Now, exhibit one is a copy of the subdivision map, which is the subject of the application. As you can see, there are five lots on this subdivision map, three of which are so-called rear lots, which are permitted as a right, assuming they qualify under the Stratford zoning regulations. So rear lots are permitted. Now, I wanted to give you a little background information as to how I came to be submitting an application for what I will admit to be quite a few variances, okay? Normally, I'm not standing here asking for a lot of variances, but there's a reason for this. In August of 2021, I was contacted by my client, who had purchased a property which is the subject of tonight's application, who was interested in constructing apartments and/or condominiums on the site. I explained to this gentleman that the only zoning regulations are related to the development of residence apartments in the town. Excuse me.
Thank you, Barry.
I lose my train of thought very easily these days. The only regulation which related to development of residence apartments in town, with the exception of the so-called Transit Oriented Development Regulation, which applies only to property within a half-mile of the railroad station. And this property, obviously, is not within a half-mile of the railroad station. That was the existing section 5.3 of our regulations, which had been obsolete for a number of years. That section was created in the early 1980s to allow apartment condominium development in Stratford. The way it was structured, there was a total of 604.5 unit equivalents available townwide, with no more than 100 in any school district. Over the years, the 604 units were constructed so that none remained as of about five years ago. So as of about five years ago, all the residence apartments in town had been used up. So that regulation that dealt with residence apartments was obsolete. You couldn't come in and apply for it under that regulation. So the only option available to a developer who wished to build any apartments or condominiums in town was to do so as a TOD, Transit Oriented Development, project down near the railroad station, or as a, an affordable apartment reg, application under section 8-30G of the Connecticut General Statutes, which is the so-called Affordable Housing Regulation. That statute provides, now by the way, exhibit two is a copy of a site plan that was anticipated to be submitted to the zoning commission by my client, which represents a 48-unit affordable housing project on the site, all right? Affordable, it wasn't necessarily affordable, but at the time, it was an apartment site which we were planning to submit as a non-affordable application. The statute 8-30G provides that a project could be constructed as a so-called affordable project under the statutes if at least 15% of the units were dedicated to families where total income is less than 60% of the area median income. Another 15% of the units must be dedicated to families where the total family income is less than 80% of the area median income. Restrictions must be placed on the property, limiting sale and rental of these units for a period of 40 years. Therefore, under this statute, 30% of the units must be restricted to affordable for 40 years. Historically, proposed affordable housing projects under this statute have been controversial and oftentimes resulted in significant litigation and expense to both the developer and the zoning commission by way of appeals to the Superior Court and higher courts. The reason for this is that under the provision of the Affordable Statute, the burden of proof is on the zoning commission, not the applicant, but the zoning commission, to explain to a court valid reasons why an affordable application has been denied. This is the opposite of the typical situation where the burden of proof is on the developer to prove to the court why the application should have been approved. So the legislature flip-flopped the burden of proof from the developer to the town. Unfortunately, because Stratford no longer has a valid residence apartment regulation under section 5.3, developers have been forced to submit affordable housing applications under the Affordable Housing Statute. This is an untenable situation because it places the zoning commission in an almost impossible position of having to justify to a typically unsympathetic court why an application has been denied or modified, even if the reasons are typically valid under the existing zoning regulations. Under the Affordable Housing Statute, the local zoning regulations go out the window. They don't care what the local zoning regulations say. If it's an affordable application and it theoretically could work, the town's supposed to approve it. This does not make neighbors happy. It does not make zoning commissions happy. So I had numerous discussions with planning and zoning staff and commissioners. By the way, I have a policy. I've been a lawyer in this town for 48 years. I have a policy where I will not submit, I will not represent a developer submitting an affordable housing application, because it alienates the neighbors so much, half of whom, I think I or my father or my partner, have represented at one point in time or another. So I've had numerous discussions with planning and zoning staff and commissioners over the years concerning the obsolescence of this section 5.3, our local zoning regulation. I also know that staffers had discussions with both the planning commission and the zoning commission regarding this issue. Therefore, at the request of my client, with the help of Sussmita and Jay in the zoning office, after reviewing the Plan of Conservation and Development and the Housing Strategies for Stratford, which was adopted in 2021, I drafted a proposed Zone Text Amendment, modifying our existing section 5.3, and submitted it to the zoning commission. As required by statute, the Zone Text Amendment was referred to the Planning Commission, DEEP, Regional Planning, in anticipation of the zoning commission public hearing. The Planning Commission approved my proposed Zone Text Amendment at its regular meeting on November 6th, 2021. The purpose of the new regulation was to encourage and allow smaller-scale multifamily developments which fall in between single-family housing and large-scale multifamily developments. This proposed use would only be established in the following locations, under my proposal, within any existing two-family zone, RM1, or in all single-family districts, RS3 or RS4, on both sides of Broadbridge Avenue, 200 feet deep, between Barnum Avenue and Emerald Place. That's where we were proposing to be able to build residence apartments. There were a lot of reasons why that location was chosen, which I won't go into tonight. All such proposals would have had to been approved by the zoning commission as a special case after a public hearing, and would have had to been approved by the Architectural Review Board. And as I indicated, that Zone Text Amendment was approved by the Planning Commission in November of 2021. At that meeting, the Planning Commission made specific findings as to the effect that this proposed Zone Text Amendment was consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development, and consistent with our housing strategies for Stratford and the future land use map in place under the Plan of Conservation and Development. Unfortunately, at the zoning meeting on April 13th, 2022, the zoning commission voted to deny my request for the Zone Text Amendment regarding section 5.3. This circumstance left the only alternative for my client regarding development of this property as an affordable housing project under 8-30G, which is that exhibit two that I handed to each of you. That exhibit represents such an affordable housing development. However, that site plan, exhibit two, was exactly the kind of an application I was trying to avoid by modifying the zoning regulation that Stratford has in place for residence apartments. I was trying to avoid affordable housing applications as the only alternative to, well, it's the only alternatives. So rather than go down this road, my client searched for an alternative to such an affordable housing development proposal. And tonight's application to you represents this alternative. Exhibit three is a letter from a neighbor, Kathy Rainey. It encloses a petition signed by 34 people from the immediate neighborhood, indicating that it's the neighbor's consensus that they would support a five-lot subdivision with variances rather than an apartment building under 8-30G. This application represents an unusual circumstance. Based upon the approval of the proposed Zone Text Amendment by the Planning Commission, my client took steps towards the development of this property, which he would not otherwise have taken. Unfortunately, now, a situation where only, the only alternative to this proposal is an affordable housing project under 8-30G, which is an alternative that my client does not wish to pursue, and I certainly won't be involved in it if he does have to go down that road. This dilemma leads to a proposal, this proposal that I'm here on tonight, as the only alternative to a development which would be unpopular with the neighborhood, and it's for these reasons that I ask you to overlook the numerous variances requested by my applications tonight and approve this application. So that's the reason why I'm here, asking for as many variances as I have. It's the only way we can make this property work, through single-family houses rather than an affordable. And since the zoning commission saw fit not to approve a modification to the Residence Apartment Regulation, our section 5.3, the only option left to someone who wants to build apartments is 8-30G. And the neighbors don't want it. I don't want to present it. I don't think there's anybody in town that wants to see that happen, yet that's what's going to happen if we can't work something out along these lines. So that's the, that's the story, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Knott. Questions from the commissioners? Renee?
No, I'm still looking at it.
Okay.
No, no, no. The, there are five lots. Two have entrances on Strechfis, and three have entrances on Broadbridge Avenue. Broadbridge Avenue, there's an existing house that's going to remain on Broadbridge. And then there are two rear lots on Broadbridge that have long driveways, you can see. And then there is a lot on the street at Strechfis, and then there's a rear lot behind the lot on the street at Strechfis. Now, as I indicated, rear lots, while they may seem a little bit unusual to us in Stratford who haven't been familiar with them for too long, but this zoning regulation, I think it's 3.3 of the Stratford zoning regulations, allows rear lots as a right. You see rear lots in a lot of towns that have private driveways, Fairfield, Westport, where there's a lot of land and not all of it is, has road frontage. You see rear lots in situations like that. Stratford didn't have them really until about 10 years ago, when this regulation was passed. So they are permitted.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Mr. Loewen?
Yeah, just to confirm something with you on Mr. Knott. Basically, in going through the petitions that are presented, you're really looking for two variances on the existing one-family lot, and then it's basically, it's the identical three variances on the quote-unquote "new" one-family lots.
Yeah, that's correct.
All right, just trying to simplify it a little bit.
Right.
Just so that my fellow commissioners-
And one of the variances on the existing house is because there's a chimney, as you face the house from the street, there's a chimney off the left that encroaches within three feet of the property line. So, I mean, it's, it's not a big deal, but it requires a variance.
All right, understood. Thank you.
Just a quick question. The square footage in that RS4 is, what, 7,500?
Yes.
Is there any reason why we can't give some of the Lot 5 square footage to Lot 4 to at least get that into, you know, closer to 7,500? Lot 5's got 9,000 square feet, and Lot 4 has 6,314.
Well, it, it looks like it's got 9,000 square feet, but the 9,000 square feet is, doesn't count the driveway. Under that rear lot regulation, you can't count the driveway in the area of the lot. So we played with this, we played with this site plan many different ways, and this was the best compromise that we could come up with, where each of the individual lots made the most sense. Because we got to get houses on these lots. They're not going to be big houses. You know, there'll be 1,000 square feet, maybe 1,200 square foot ranches or, or capes or colonials. We looked at it, but this was the best we could do.
Thank you. Additional questions? Ron.
Attorney, just clarification. For Lot 4 and 5, the driveways, is that 50 feet of blacktop?
No, 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 no.
Or is there a green strip in between them?
No. You're required to have 25 feet for each driveway.
Right.
Now, what happens in a situation where you've got two driveways like this, 25 feet wide each, more than likely, the people who own those two houses in the back, 4 and 5, are going to share a driveway that is going to go up the middle of those two rights of way. Because, I mean, technically, each of them could put in their own driveway, but it doesn't make any sense to have two driveways going side-by-side next to each other. It's an expense that's unnecessary. So, I mean, it'll be up to the people who buy the houses, but typically, what I see is that they'll enter into a shared driveway agreement, and one, one driveway, 18 feet wide, let's say, will be paved up to the two houses to be shared by them.
Thank you. Ms. Whitman?
I don't know if this is the right place to say it, but I've, a lot of this, the emails from the neighbors have said, could it be 4 and not 5? When, if they're here and they speak, could they give us their reasoning for that?
Correct.
Yeah, I, I'm sure, I'm sure that's an issue that's going to come up. We can't do 4. The, the numbers don't work for 4. That's the problem. I would love to be, be able to tell you we could do 4, but I can't do 4.
Is there a reason why the numbers don't work for the 4?
Because they spent too much money on the property, thinking that after the Planning Commission approved the Zone Text Amendment, that the zoning commission was going to go along with it. They went ahead and closed, and they bought this property as an apartment site. And now, you know what I mean? So they got caught, they got caught hoisted by their own petard, I think is the quote from Shakespeare.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hamlet, I think.
So just for clarity, all, all additional alternatives were explored to reduce the number of variances requested?
I'm sorry?
All, all additional alternatives were explored to reduce the number of variances requested, which would have been reducing the site from 5 to 4?
Believe me, you know me well enough, Kathy.
Of course I do.
I do not submit applications for variances that we can avoid if we could possibly avoid them. Because I've, I've listened to administrative comments from Dan and Jay for, not, not decades with them, but their predecessors, decades. And the first thing they say is, well, if you do this, this, and this, you're only going to need two variances instead of three variances. Have you thought of that? We've thought of every conceivable possibility here.
Thank you. Any additional questions from the commissioners? Questions from the commissioners? If not, I thank you, sir. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this petition, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. And just for those that are in attendance that may not be aware, we have a petition that was submitted into the, into the record that has 34 signatures in favor, and they have two letters that were received, two emails that were received in favor. But opposition, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Katarina Cunliffe. I live at 54 Strechfis Road. I am for approving this if it, if it means not having an apartment building there. I think they can make it look really nice. We all knew something would be built there, and I think all of the neighbors are in agreement that we would prefer to have single-family homes versus an apartment building due to traffic and home value and all of that. The only question I have is on a map that we got, there was only one driveway off of Strechfis, so if Mr. Knott could tell us where the other one is. Either way, I'm still for it, but.
Mr. Knott, in your plans that were submitted, do you have more than one, in your plans that were submitted, do you have more than one driveway? Or access to the property?
No, no, just the only driveway is going to be for you, Chris.
For one, okay. Okay, thank you. So I hope you approve it.
Just need your name again for the record.
Oh, Katarina. Katarina, K-A-T-A-R-I-N-A. Cunliffe, C-U-N-L-I-F-F-E.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? Okay, hearing none. Those that wish to speak in opposition, in favor or opposition?
In favor.
In favor, okay. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Kathy Rainey, 206 Redbird. We, as, as most people, we walked and talked to the neighbors. There isn't one neighbor that wants to see any apartment, any 830G. We want to see houses. To us, houses, our value stays here. You put an apartment for 830G, and we're done. We're, you know, we're negative. I know I'm moving if you put the building there. And I know a few other neighbors that are moving also, if you do it. Because, you know, between being over on the corner of Strechfis and you got success, you're putting us in the middle of an apartment complex, like co-op city, you know? It's starting to feel, that's what we're starting to feel like. But I'm all in favor, you know, put the houses, squeeze it in, put it sideways, you know? You know, let them reduce the lots, let them do whatever they need to do, please, so we can keep Stratford as nice as it is in that area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Speaking in favor, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
can keep Stratford as nice as it is in that area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Speaking in favor, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Shaylyn Miesha Swinton. I live at 95 Redbird Drive in Stratford, Connecticut. So, I honestly think that it is a good compromise. So, you know, I say thank you very much to that. As I stated before, you know, we are a community, not just a neighborhood. And when we all purchased our homes, you know, we purchased them because they were in single families and not because of an apartment building. We all want to keep our value, so I say absolutely, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here to speak in favor? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Donna Campo Fiore. My address is 6 Redbird Drive in Stratford. I am on the opposite back end of the Broadbridge Avenue lots. I am in favor. However, I am concerned about, there's a wooded area which butts up to my backyard. And I'm concerned about how close that house will be, or they're, are they leaving any of the tree line? Are they putting up a fence? I would like to know how I could see additional plans for that area, because that is, that is butts up to my backyard. However, I do not want an apartment building back there. So, I am supportive of this. I just want to get some more information.
I can answer that now, if you'd like, Mr. Chairman.
Proceed, Mr. Knott.
If this is approved, we still have to commit for subdivision approval to the Planning Commission. So, at that time, there will be more complete plans submitted by us, including a planting plan and things like that. So, this is not the last public hearing that will take place on this. We gotta go for subdivision.
Right, you have to go to planning for subdivision, and you have to go to inland wetlands.
And wetlands is good.
Right. At which point in time, there should be more schematics with regards to landscaping.
Okay, and do we have any more say at that time?
Yes, both, both of those commissions have public hearings, which allow the public to, to put input, both planning and inland wetlands.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience that wish to speak in favor of the petition? In favor? Okay, hearing none. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the petition? In opposition? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm not really in favor or against, but my, my question is, I was never sent a letter. My name is Andy Sokol, and I own a property just south of this development. I was never sent a letter for this meeting. What is the rules for that? Are you supposed to have a certified or registered?
Yeah, Mr. Sokol, what was submitted this evening is a certificate of mailing indicating that a document was sent to you on June 21st at 145 Quenby Place in Stratford.
Yeah, but this is July.
No, I understand it, but-
It should be July 17.
Well, I know, there's only one-
I did have, I did have one sent, which wasn't certified, it was just a regular mailing from the attorney.
Right, that's the requirement. One mailing has to be going out, yeah.
Now, you have a second hearing here. I didn't even know about it until Friday.
Well, this is actually the first hearing, sir. Before this body, it's the first hearing. There will be other hearings if, if this board approves this application, it has to go before two other commissions. This is the first hearing, so the notification that you were sent is for this hearing. There may be future hearings, if we approve it, from planning and from inland wetlands that will require notice.
How was I supposed to know that it was tabled to August?
It's, sir, it's not tabled. This was the public hearing. We've taken no action on this petition. We just heard it for the first time.
Well, they were supposed to have a meeting on July 5th.
I'm not aware of who would have had a meeting on July 5th, but it was not this, it was not this board.
Because that's what the letter originally had said.
Unless it was on it and then withdrawn.
I, I do think it was on the initial agenda and withdrawn, because-
Then I stand corrected, sir, I apologize.
We requested more, more information on the site plan. So, that application was withdrawn and never, never heard.
All right, and since we have our town attorney here, there is no requirement for the, for a second notification after the original one's been sent. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, I, I am conflicted in this application, because my father, John Florick, I believe, has represented Mr. Sokol in the past. So, our law firm is conflicted, which is what I, a fact I learned about 4:30 this afternoon. So...
But in general, just discussing the zoning commission, the Board of Zoning Appeals requirements, let's just say for 6:30 James Farm Road, if they were on an agenda, no, let's actually, we have an actual case, 2152 Barnum Avenue, they were on the agenda, they've been withdrawn. Do they have to send a second notice? My understanding is, is that you do not.
I, I'm really hesitant. I'm kind of bound by my legal ethics here.
Okay.
Can I respond, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Knott, you're just as, as expert as I am when it comes to things of this, if not more so.
Two things. You're right about a second, a second notice not having to be sent if the meeting goes beyond the original date. Second is that under Connecticut case law, the fact that Mr. Sokol is here indicates that he got notice of the hearing. And therefore, any prejudice to him that may have resulted from the fact that he may not have gotten the letter has been cured by the fact that he has actual notice of the meeting and is here. That's Connecticut Supreme Court cases say that.
Thank you. But in essence, the bottom line is, is that this is the first time we've taken action on it. You are here and have an opportunity to speak in favor or against, or be neutral. So, you, you are given your right to, to have input with regards to this.
I couldn't make the other meetings when they were proposing a condominium development. They were originally supposed to purchase my property next door. And they were doing a condominium project without a contract with me. So, I, I told them, why don't you purchase my property now, like you originally said you were going to? Then you'd be able to use my 25 feet and build a roadway, and then you wouldn't need these long driveways for the two houses in the back. And they said, well, how, how, how much you gonna go down on your price? I'm not going down.
Okay, I understand that.
I mean, they're shady people, really. I wouldn't trust them.
Okay, I appreciate your comments, sir. Is there anyone else willing, that wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Opposition? Hearing done, the chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing on these five petitions.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Llewellyn, second by Ms. Witham. Discussion on the motion. Hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Seeing that that is the last item on the public hearing, the chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. By Ms. Witham. Second by Mr. Ticky. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries unanimously. So, the public hearing is closed. We will, oops, we will now go into the administrative session, where we may or may not discuss this petition. First item on the administrative session agenda, are the items listed on the public hearing for August 2nd? Since we have so many people in attendance, well, not yet. And the reason I'm saying that is because, since we have people in the audience, I'd like to take, or if there's a consensus among the members, I'd like to take 2863 Broadbridge 1 through 5, or DOT through 4, off of the table for discussion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to take 2863 Broadbridge Avenue inclusively off the table.
The motion, do I hear a second? Second by Ms. Gibson. Discussion on the motion. Hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. So, the petitions are open for discussion. Would anyone like to discuss it?
I just would like to say that, thank you, Barry, for bringing this back in a different form. I personally like this a lot better than what was proposed when they were trying to do the zoning change. So, that's it for me.
Okay. Ms. Gibson.
I agree. I think that it would benefit the community.
Then as the chair, what I'd like to see is a motion for approval indicating the following, that the petitions are within the character and nature of the surrounding neighborhood, that the petitions create less public health and safety by reduced density, that the size and nature of the parcels are not currently, without zoning variances, able to accommodate the character and nature of the abutting properties, and that it serves the public interest and the best by the maintenance of property values to approve these petitions. So, somebody would like to make that motion?
I'd like to make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Llewellyn, do I hear a second? Second by Mr. Ticky. Discussion on the motions. Discussion. Hearing done, all those in favor of approval say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Motion passes unanimously. The petitions have been approved. They will now go forth to, if the applicant wishes, they will go forth to planning and to inland wetlands, at which time you'll get a notice regarding future outcomes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Knott.
Thank you, Barry.
Next, let's go to 6:30 James Farm Road, at which time, Ms. Clary? There you are. Please, come up, come up. Uh, no, you can stay there. You don't have to get, get up. Come on up. So, for the record, alternate Judy Clary sat on the public hearing and will now be seated for the administrative session in the event that we discuss 6:30 James Farm Road. So, the chair would entertain a motion to take 6:30 James Farm Road et al. off the table.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Ms. Llewellyn, do I hear a second? Second by Ms. Gibson. Discussion on the motion. Hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes unanimously. 6:30 James Farm Road is off the table for discussion purposes. You gotta leave one door open. Thank you. Yep, they didn't hear that. Dave, could you be so kind as to open one door for us, because we need to have the public access? So, we do not violate freedom of information. Thank you very much. Okay, so it's off the table for discussion. Would anyone like to have a conversation regarding these petitions? Knott, I'll start off.
I get it. You know, the scope and nature of the property, I, I know it's the goal and ambition of Boards of Zoning Appeals, not to take conforming parcels and make them non-conforming, but from my personal standpoint, hearing some speak, some people speak... Oh, before we even get that far, Mr. Florick has a letter, it's a memo to us, and it regards the, it is regarding the, it's regarding Mr. Attorney Cupic stating that he felt that the notice was fail, there was a failure to publish appropriate notice in the newspaper, and saying that the notice was published that was not compliant, because one of the issues was a regulation that was not correctly stated. We have this memo from Attorney Florick. Please take the opportunity to look at it.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Florick?
No, the, the issue wasn't with the, and I apologize for sending that at 4:30 in the afternoon, or whenever, whenever I sent it. But the issue wasn't with the newspaper notice. Dan and the Planning and Zoning Office published a newspaper notice. There was no issue with that notice.
Okay.
The issue was with Attorney Cupic alleged that there was the incorrect citation of the zoning regulation they sought to vary in the letter that Mr. DeCilio sent to the neighbors. That was Mr. Cupic.
Yes, I just, I misread that paragraph, yes.
So, yeah.
Thank you for that clarification. So, in your opinion, having reviewed the materials, do you, do you think that there's case law in, in so much that the notice is not invalid?
Well, I, I think that's, I don't want to put words or decisions in the board's mouth, but I think before you consider the application, you ought to quickly consider whether or not you find that that incorrectly cited zoning regulation prejudiced the neighbors in, in order to prepare for the hearing. I think my conclusion is in the last paragraph there. Ought to consider whether his notice sufficiently apprised those neighbors of his proposal, and whether those neighbors had the ability to intelligently prepare for the hearing. If you feel that the neighbors had a, had a adequate notice and opportunity to prepare, then you should just, by resolution, say so.
Understood.
And then proceed to the merits. If you don't feel that, if you feel that the incorrect citation of that letter prejudiced the neighbors, then you would by resolution vote that as well, and then you would not move to the, to the merits of the application. You would find that, that notice was insufficient.
Thank you. Well, from my personal standpoint as the chairman, having seen members of the community, both abutting property owners and those that were not required to be noticed by certified mail, that people came out to speak both in favor and against, I would say that the notice is proper, and that we can proceed forward by resolution, but I'll leave that up to the rest of the commissioners. Ms. Witham?
I agree with what you just said. Was it the section that was cited incorrectly in the letter? And what, or the difference, like, what's the, what did one say and what did the other say? Just, just curious to make sure they're not way off. But I do agree that people showing up here in both ways was...
Dan, if I'm not mistaken, it was a decimal point? So, the, the crux of the situation was there, because it was underneath that, the general regulation, but it was the decimal point, meaning that a .1 or .2 was missing? So, it was the specifics, but the general gist of the application was under that regulation?
Yes, I believe that's the case. It was a missing period, I believe.
Missing period.
In between a 3 and a 1. Which changed the section that the applicant was applying for.
And were those sections, the definition of those sections considerably different? That's, that's really my question.
I do believe that they are a little bit different. I think the section would have been for a, possibly a coastal site plan review, which, I mean, I would have to double-check the regulations, but the fact that the attorney showed, and his representative was also here, and I know the applicant had previously told everybody that he had went house to house-
Yeah.
-to sit down with everybody, but with you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Well, he had-
I was gonna say the same thing, that I agree that there was a great turnout on both sides.
I mean, the reality is, is that-
Just curious why they're not here today, though, because it was announced we're gonna table it today.
Right. I, I think that the, the attorney made representation at the, in his comments, that regardless of how we decide, well, if we, if we were to decide to approve these, he would take it to court regardless, so...
And that's why I just wanted to make sure that procedurally, the ZBA just considered that issue. I know all those facts that you guys just brought up individually, those are all facts you can consider.
Right. So, from that standpoint, I would like to entertain a motion, if someone would like to make it, to proceed with the discussions on this, these applications.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we proceed with discussions on 6:30 James Farm Road as now untabled.
Second by Ms. Clary. Discussion on the motion. Hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will continue our discussions. As I was, started to say, I, I know what the general concept of Boards of Zoning Appeals are. They are to look to reduce the number of variances required. However, as I said, I think we also have some common sense that weighs in, and I think we also have a moral obligation, understanding that a lesser dense complex is sometimes in the best public interest. So, from that standpoint, that's where I'm leaning. But I gotta tell you, I have, I have an issue with the lot for the cell tower. I mean, that's just, but then again, as my understanding is, it was originally a windmill, the cell tower came in when, I guess, you know, when the Model A was getting built, or whatever the case might be, when the initial phones were starting to come out, lo and behold, before rules and regulations, here comes a cell tower. So, I, I'm still torn on that one, but I'll leave up to the rest, the rest of the board to discuss. Ms. Witham?
I kind of get what you're saying there, but will it make a difference? Will the cell tower come down one way or another, or is it just now going to be on its own lot?
Based on this, it'd be on its own lot.
Does that make, but the tower's still gonna be there.
Tower's gonna be there. It's just a question as to...
Tower's going to be there. It's just a question as to, if it was not given its own lot, it would be on one of the households, one of the residential lots if we approved it, and then someone would have an argument saying that they can get an economic benefit from the fact that it's there. By parcelling it off, that lot could remain to the present owner and then just quote-unquote "build around" it. So they retain the lot, access to the lot. It's just for the cell tower, but it's a, as I call them, you have spot zoning, it's a spot lot. We're just drawing a little square around it saying, there it is. Not that I anticipate a lot of those coming before us. This is a unique top, you know, topography for the property, but, you know, we'll see what happens, but I don't want to monopolize the discussions. Everybody else?
Thank you. Well, I was just concerned. I know that it's all private, that the town wasn't going to be the maintenance on there. So who is responsible for the cell tower if there is a problem? I mean, like, who's checking it? And, I mean, is it going to endanger anyone? It's been there a long time.
Yeah, no, I think that the situation would be, and I think it was represented at the public hearing, that there's a private contract between the cell tower operator and the current owner of the property.
Right.
And in fact, they need to have access to it, so there'd be a right-of-way from the street to there so that the, so the cell tower could be maintained properly and it wouldn't fall into disrepair except.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to revisit that.
Yeah, and as far as public services, in terms of, there would be no road that would be required, so the town would not quote-unquote "plow" that road. It would have to be a private situation. And I believe this has to go before other, if we were to approve it, it has to go before, is it zoning and planning or just?
It needs to go inland, wetlands, and planning.
At which point in time any other public safety concerns would be discussed by the Planning Commission, because that's more of their purview than it is ours. So I would not be opposed if someone wants to make a motion to approve six-thirty James Farm et al.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve six-thirty James Farm Road as, as applied, presented, and tabled at our last meeting.
Second by Ms. Clary. I'd just like to add to that, again, the same situation as I, if you would accept it as a friendly amendment, the character and nature of the surrounding neighborhood, less impact on public healthy, public health and safety by reduced density, the size and nature of the parcel cannot accommodate and achieve the goal of character and nature of the abutting properties, and it serves the public interest for the maintenance of property values.
Yeah, amendment accepted as stated.
It's by chicken scratch. There's my chicken scratch. I'll have to decipher it for you, I'm sure.
It's, it's good verbiage. It states through a purpose of-
So you accept-
In good land stewards, yes.
Accept the amendment, friendly amendment, accept the friendly amendment? Okay, so the motion, there has been a friendly amendment accepted, so will any further discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. DeCilio. Next, we go to the approval of minutes of the July fifth meeting. The chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the July fifth.
Motion by Ms. Witham, do I hear a second? Second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries unanimously. We have no CAM site plan review, we have no erosion and sediment control. Members' concerns or comments? Okay?
Could I just ask a question?
Sure.
I don't know if it was this meeting or if it's a zoning meeting that I went to where they were looking at revising that section that Barry was talking about. Do you know if that's in the works?
Yeah, we have several sections that are in the works. We have a long list of regulations that need to be updated.
Okay.
That will eventually be Planning Commission, zoning commission.
Okay.
And that one's-
That one's there. Hopefully, it's toward the top.
We'll see.
So we don't have to go through this, make our job a little lighter.
And you're, you're referring to the tattoo?
No, I'm talking to what Barry tried to bring to zone. Yeah, that one.
Yes, that is towards the top.
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely. The tattoo one, not so much.
Yeah, that's... Thank you. It just would kind of avoid a lot of these. Good. I know it takes time. I get it.
Any other items? So we have two petitions that have been held over, so they will appear definitely on the September agenda, as well as whatever else may come before us. Okay.
We have, it's either two, maybe three more. One is for accessory apartment.
Okay.
The other is for gas station up on North Main, just above Score's. Wasn't existing gas station.
Okay, I know where that is, yeah.
They need some break-ins. Break-ins out of the way.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll have a, we'll have a relatively full agenda in September. Hopefully, everyone will be able to be there. Do we, when is that next meeting? September sixth. And I will be here. Will I? Yes, I will. I will be here, September sixth, day after Labor Day. No other items? The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Moved by Ms. Clary, second by Ms. Gibson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. We're off the record at seven fifty-six. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, and have a good evening.